What do you think?
We might want to tilt it to get the conversation.
Yeah, I know.
No, that's not well, yeah.
I don't know. We've had so much to watch, they cannot stop, but I don't know if they have enough set up.
Oh, that's very nice.
Zoom link? It was on.
Yes, it's on the agenda.
On the mission or staff?
Click on the agenda, the link is at the bottom.
I don't think we've got one up there. It's taped to the wall. We'll get another one here shortly.
Start with Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Eckler.
Here.
Packard.
Or.
Here.
Here.
Hammond.
Here. Conflict of interest declarations. Approve agenda with the addition of the contingency transfer resolution.
Can we also add the Minnehaha County JDC agreement renewal?
Still moved. Motion a second and further discussion. Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond. Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes. Yes.
Eckler.
Yes, motion passes, approve minutes.
I move to approve. Second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call. Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Eckler.
Yes, motion passes. Are there any visitors to be heard that doesn't pertain to the agenda?
Could we see a copy of the agenda?
There is one down there at the end of the table, I think we can set around.
No. I've got a spare two. If you want to share it somewhere.
Well, can we assume that the rezoning is on the agenda for those of us that don't have a copy of it?
It is, what's next? You're up. That was the first, the time for the first reading and public hearing of the rezone, of a request to rezone land located at the south end of 460th Avenue along the river from NRC Natural Resource Conservation to rural residential for subdivision, 18 residential property lots. I'm going to give the applicant 15 minutes. We'll start with Drew and then we'll give the applicant 15 minutes to propose it and then we'll go with the proponents, each will get five minutes to speak and then opponents will get five minutes each. And then we'll, then we'll give the, then there'll be a rebuttal at the end for 10 minutes. And if, if you're going to speak, you need to come to the podium, state your name and address. So.
Say, can I, who need, am I the only one that can rebuttal or can others?
Just you.
Just me.
Yep. If you choose to. So Drew, we'll start with you.
On behalf of Daniel Heiney, Russell and Darcy Olson, Sarah Taggart submitted a rezoning petition to the Clay County zoning administrator. Rezone would change zoning from NRC Natural Resource Conservation to rural residential. The area for rezon is approximately 56 acres in size, which eat lot, each lot having between two and two point acres in size. Subdivision with 18 lots with lots number 11 through 18 have separate accretion sublots giving river access while separating the buildable lots from FEMA designated floodplain. Access to subdivision will be by paved county road 406 Avenue. The site is bordered to the south by the Missouri River, west by Clay County Park and north and east by approximately 500 acres of open crop ground. The legal description for the proposed plat is preliminary plat of Lot A of Section X, Section 16, 92, 52 West, Clay County, South Dakota and parts of accretion land to government, uh, government lots three and four, Section 16 Township 92, range 52 West, find, uh, prime meridian as described on a plat recorded in book seven of page force, uh, 648. I'm just going to fast forward to the recommendations. Zoning administrator recommends approval with rezoning petition for the following reasons. The building of single family homes and housing has been allowed in terms of current zoning ordinance in the NRC and along the Missouri River. The comprehensive plan guidance is for areas deemed environment sensitive use two acre rule. Finally, the proposed plat meets requirements of a rural residential district. Any questions on the board?
No, I just have one more thing, since we have so many people and there's people on the hallway. If anybody out there wants to speak, just try and give us our, get our attention. I'm trying not to yell into the microphone. And anybody that's zooming in, um, we don't want to ignore anybody, so just make sure that somehow we get, that you're able to speak. So everybody can help us out if there's somebody trying to speak and we're not, we're not recognizing them. So, Sarah.
Morning. I, I'm Sarah Taggart, I'm the zoning applicant, I am here on behalf of Mary Larry Heiney, the trustee of the subject property.
Excuse me, Travis, could you ever turn the microphone on, please?
Sorry, okay, should I start, okay. I'm Sarah Taggart. I am here on behalf of Mary Larry Heiney, the widow and trustee of the subject property. Additionally, I am the niece of Daniel Heiney, um, in whose trust this property is held. Over the years, my uncle had been asked by a countless number of individuals if he would be willing to sell them some land on his riverfront so they could put up a cabin or a home. All those years he declined, not because he was opposed to lots on the river, but because he simply pushed the project to the back burner. He wanted to, to design a really nice development. You know, with, uh, which included leaving part of the riverfront to the families of one brother and three of his sisters. So in his trust, he has directed that four lots, approximately two acres with 200 feet of frontage be plotted and left to four different families to be used for their enjoyment. His widow then decided to go ahead and develop the riverfront in accordance with his intentions. I'd like to refer to the map or the sketch that you see here. And I know last time it was projected, I would have blown this up if I wouldn't know, if I didn't know what was, was not going to be. But you can see this lot here is lot number one. And, um, this is owned by Russell and Darcy Olson, who, uh, and you will notice that the previous owners had completely cleared the trees and farmed all the way to the bank. Since Olsons have purchased this lot, they have, uh, made some really nice improvements and, um, I will let them momentarily explain more about their plans and what they're doing. But, um, they've already, you know, they'll tell you about the trees and whatnot, okay? Lots two, three, four, and five are the lots that have been directed per Daniel Heiney's trust to be left to the four families of his siblings. You will notice that the trees have been preserved here. My uncle always intended on developing this riverfront and knew that a lot with trees would be much more desirable than with, than one without. So rather than clearing them and farming that portion, he left his trees undisturbed. Otherwise, he certainly could have cleared this area years ago and gains a substantial amount of farm ground. Then after, uh, lots basically six, six through 10 are very similar to one through five, or two through five. You'll notice that, uh, you know, lot about 10 and 11, there are very few trees. I would imagine when developed, they'll, this will actually gain trees. And, uh, you know, people will plant that just naturally that not very many trees grew there. So I think that'll, um, be a net gain of trees in that area. Then lots 11 through 18 have a lot with a subplot. The subplot is owned that is land that is currently in the flood zone. The line between the north border of the lot and the riverbank delineates between the two. There will be a deed restriction put on these lots, requiring that these lots and sublots stay together and cannot be split and sold separately. Any permanent structure like a cabin or a home or whatever must be built on the lot and not the subplot. The floodplain portion is to provide rivers access only and not for any residents. I'd also like to point out that these lots are not technically river lots at all, as the rest residents will be back on the main lot. So technically, we are talking about 10 residential lots along the river. I'd also like to point out that the subplot naturally pushes any construction much further back and greatly diminishes or may even prohibit uh, visibility from the river. So that's the, the map. All right. The rural residential zoning designation we are seeking on this property is clearly allowed for as outlined in the Clay County zoning ordinance. The lot and yard regulations even include an exception specifically addressing properties along the Missouri National Recreation River. The setback criteria from the ordinary high water mark for properties built on the Missouri River are greater than those of other navigable water bodies in the county. The fact that regulations for residential properties on the Missouri are specifically addressed in the ordinance clearly shows that the intention of the ordinance was to anticipate, expect and allow for residential zoning. Additionally, there's a great deal of precedence for the zoning to be granted on a development of this size and no precedence for its denial. This development benefits the county in many ways. Approving this rezone request actually does a better job of preserving and protecting this area by preventing other permissible uses under current zoning that most would find far less desirable. This development also fulfills the great need for residential building sites in the Vermillion area, rural Vermillion and the riverfront for which there is always strong demand. Clay County has a great deal of publicly owned property that provides no property tax revenue to the county. These lots, especially when built upon, would benefit the citizens of Clay County by bringing in much greater property tax revenue than what is currently taken in. Having people live on the river provides a degree of safety to those using the river for recreational purposes who might find themselves in need of help or in a dangerous situation. I know this from personal experience, we live on the river and have helped many. The goal of this development is to do nothing that would infringe upon others enjoyment of the river, but rather provide the ability of property owners to even more fully the enjoy the Missouri by having the opportunity to reside there. Approval of rezoning to rural residential will do nothing to prohibit any activity previously engaged in by those who use the river. In no way does this limit others or infringe upon others. Waterfront properties are highly sought after. People dream of living on a lake or a lotion, or an ocean, which we obviously don't have here. But what we do has, have is the river and having the ability to live there on privately owned land should not be prevented. We care about this land. We love the river and its adjacent properties as much as anybody. I live on my, on the river myself, I have more vested interests than most to preserve and protect it. We want to provide a beautiful development, not just for those who live there, but also for those utilizing the river. We want the natural beauty of the riverbank to be maintained. We want as many trees as possible to be, be preserved and this is the best way to do that by approving this. The larger lot size was purpose purposely chosen to keep density low, even lower than the ordinance requires. These were considerations all to make this a beautiful addition to this area and an asset to Clay County. Additionally, there will be covenants placed on this development to keep it nice. The lots will not be allowed to be subdivided, no mobile homes will be allowed and the setback from the high watermark will be increased to set those properties even further back than the ordinance requires. Also, it will, uh, trying to figure out a way to work this in, but it will be, um, very much stressed, very strongly encouraged to keep as many of those cottonwood trees intact as possible. These are just a few examples of the restrictions and covenants we plan on putting in place and I'm working on more to just ensure that the beauty is preserved here as much as possible. Okay, we are grateful for the county, that the county had the foresight to predict and predict reasonable development of rural residential property along the river. We would like to point out that the proposed lots fully comply with rural residential zoning under the area of permitted use. There is no doubt that the county had a small rural residential development in mind, such as the one before you now, when they approved the specific and detailed zoning just a few years ago. If the intention of the government was to own and control this land and prohibit development along the Missouri, then steps would have been taken long ago to provide for that. Clearly prohibiting development was not the intention, tensions as steps in that direction were not taken, but instead provisions allowing for development have been put in place. The American idea of personal property rights is something that must be protected. This is sensible, reasonable development that, that purposely goes above and beyond to show sensitivity to others by over complying with the ordinance that has been put in place. Again, there is substantial precedent for residential development on the Missouri and Clay County. This usage is about as minimal and unintrusive as you can find. The application before you provides for attractive development, it does nothing to infringe upon others properties, uh, property rights and its approval does far more to protect this property than denial of it would. I strongly urge the approval of this committee for this rezone request. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll hear from other proponents.
Reading off the sound because I don't want to use any paper. My name is Darcy Olson, this is my husband Russell Olson. We are at 31886 460th Street, we would be lot one. You know, uh, it's absolutely beautiful property, no doubt. We purchased it a little over two years ago and with the intent of putting our retirement home there. We, as Sarah said, uh, you know, it's, it was pretty stripped and had been farmed on many years. So we've worked hard to, uh, turn the, turn the dirt, the dirt and, and plant some native grasses and we've planted over 300 trees. Uh, we, and I've worked with Missy from the, um, the conservation office and she's been lovely. She, we intend to plan more on the north side once we figure out where, uh, the road to these houses will go. So we, uh, we intend to do the stabilization as natural as possible. We'd like to have it sloped with, uh, no real rocks looking in, no concrete, uh, you know, rip, rip rap or whatever you guys call it here. And, um, but have natural vegetation, vegetation on it so that it does look lovely from, from the river. Our house will be set back, we will not have a dock, no needs, no need to be, we've got Clay County right next door. We moved to the big city so that we could enjoy this beauty and not be able to reach out and touch our neighbor like we can in, you know, Texas. So, um, the, uh, the intent was the, the, it was really exciting for us to be able to have this acreage and have neighbors that enjoyed it as much as we do. The easement that we will be giving the other lots is given, uh, with certain restrictions, we are going to make sure that there are restrictive covenants in the, each deed that follow the land so that there's, um, not anything that's, um, overbuilt or underbuilt. You know, we really are encouraging, uh, them to, to preserve the land. And the homes, homes will be tasteful, I, I mean ours will and I'm sure that theirs will too. They, we want to make sure that it aligns with the beauty of the area and I imagine that the view from the river will be quite appealing. So I encourage you guys to pass this too, thank you.
Thank you. Other proponents?
Hi there, my name's Sarah Mart, my address is 45907 Liberty Road. Um, I'm a landowner along the Missouri River, upriver from these potential sites and Clay County Park. I'm in support of new zoning to create these 18 lots for single family homes along the Missouri River. I'd rather see aesthetically pleasing banks and trees than farm ground going all the way up to the riverbank. The need for river lots is huge on this stretch of the river. The people who own the river property do so because of their love and respect of the history and beauty of the Missouri River. Landowners will take tremendous care of these properties, doing all they can to protect their property, including the bank, wildlife and trees. This care translates to beautiful properties and views along the stretch of our recreational river. As a landowner, I see kayakers, caneurs and floaters enjoying the river and enjoying the, the bank views on their river adventures. And we too have helped many of, of many people, both kayakers and floaters and boaters who have needed help and it's nice when there's people on the river who can help at a moment's notice. I don't believe a home on a two acre plot of land scares off the wildlife either. We're surrounded by trees in our home and regularly see fish, beaver, raccoons, possum, deer, geese, ducks, eagles and more on our property. One day I counted seven eagles roosting in our trees. I was disappointed when the Plank Talk recently published a letter to the editor, which was filled with misinformation. If I had not known the facts, I would have been led to believe that this rezoning was going to cause grave damage to the Missouri River. The public has been manipulated and misled by this. The following is a list of the corrections to the false statements that were made for the public to consider as facts. In the letter and at the last meeting, there was lots of mention of this stretch of the river being federally recognized as wild and scenic. I'm not an expert on this, but my research showed that this stretch is included in the Wild and Scenic River Act, but was designated as recreational, not wild nor scenic. The recreational classification comes thanks to the natural islands, sandbars, shoots and snags, which all still exist and will not be harmed by the development of this piece of land. Number two, I also know the previous owner Danny Heiney and know that his intentions were to develop this as is stated in his trust. Number three, Clay County Park is a beautiful park that many enjoy, but is not a natural and uninhibited area. The landing and docks, the rock on the banks, the deck and the shelter are all developments that have been made to preserve the park for people to enjoy. These are the same efforts that landowners will make to preserve the beauty of this three quarter mile stretch down river from Clay County Park. This development is connected to the development that already has occurred at Clay County Park. And then returns to uninhabited publicly owned land for miles, just a quarter mile or three quarter mile past the park. There are currently homes, number four, there are currently homes adjacent to Clay County Park. My housing development of eight lots share the western border of Clay County Park. Number five, this proposed development will not detract from the experience people have at Clay County Park or on the river. From the park, I doubt people will notice or be disappointed by the view after this development has been established. I say this with confidence because those who enjoy Clay County Park do not seem to be offended by the view looking west from the bank of the park. Many people post photos of a magnificent sunset seen from the park. They seem to have no idea that a housing development is included in their photos. Our houses are set back, so structures and lights do not pollute their views and our banks are aesthetically maintained so as not to detract from the beauty of the river. This, and, uh, this new development will not allow building in a floodplain as Sarah had described before. In conclusion, I'm confident these property owners will protect all that is beautiful about this river property, including the trees, wildlife and the bank for themselves and for those enjoying Clay County Park or traveling on the river. I hope you will pass this rezoning request. I do not think doing so will be detrimental to the beauty that people are able to enjoy along the stretch of the Missouri River. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents?
My name is Garrett Peterson. I am a resident of Vermillion, I'm here, um, speaking on behalf of myself and my wife Connor. We boat the Missouri River frequently in the summer and we use Clay County Boat Ramp to access the river. We navigate the stretch from Ponca to Yankton every year. And there are miles and miles of undeveloped land, uh, along the river that are no doubt beautiful. But there are also beautiful homes and cabins on both sides, the South Dakota and Nebraska banks. Every time that we boat, uh, we putts along these. Every time that we boat, we putts along these banks on both sides of what we call Goat Island. And down to areas along the mouth of the Vermillion and the Ponderosa and admiring the homes and landscaping. These properties do not detract from the beauty of the river. In fact, I believe that they add to it. This proposed development would provide aesthetically pleasing homes and would improve the current condition of that area. With the stabilization of the banks and many trees that will be preserved and likely, as Sarah mentioned, many new ones planted. It would also provide a significant tax benefit to the county. Once homes are constructed, we are in favor of the rezoning. And are excited about the opportunity for eighteen families to build homes and enjoy the Missouri River like we do. We can't wait to admire them from the water. Thank you.
Thank you. Other proponents?
I'm Jeannie Ives. I'm the niece of Daniel Heine and a beneficiary of his trust and through him, the legacy of my grandparents who purchased the property. Under consideration decades ago. I first want to thank your county staff for assisting and filling out and filing of this rezoning application. It's important to note the staff's assistance because the public needs to know this entire process. Has been completed in a transparent way with the intention of fully complying with the county ordinance. The zoning administrator, Mr. Gunderson, in his memo about this project made two important comments that I want to be sure are read publicly. In his conclusion, he stated that the building of single family dwellings and housing developments. Has been allowed in the NRC and along the river before. And that this specific proposal meets the requirements of rural residential districts. He elaborated on this specifically by stating. Quote, in Clay County and along the Missouri River, there are approximately 150 residences. According to county records, most of these residences were built in the last thirty years, including my sisters. And under the terms of the current zoning ordinance, new residences have been built along the Missouri River and in the countywide NRC district. One resident. Or even eighteen potential new residences is nothing new. Or unprecedented along the Missouri River or the NRC district. Again, eighteen potential new residences is nothing new or unprecedented along the Missouri River or the NRC district. To the commissioners. I have sat in a similar seat as you do as a city council member in Wheaton, Illinois. And I have heard and voted on numerous zoning proposals of all types. The difficult zoning decisions are ones involving property rights from two different private properties. Usually adjacent owners argue over setbacks and heights, multifamily developments. Rezoned lots to commercial or light industrial subdivision of lots. Or planned unit developments which practically throw out all previously written rules. The proposal before you does none of that. There are no competing private property rights here. The rezoning proposal today is so routine. That the controversy around it is both surprising and alarming. Surprising because we, the applicants have fully complied with rural residential zoning. And if has asked for no special accommodations. And there are multiple precedents for such housing along the Missouri River in Clay County. Alarming because the proposal before you was written with the help of your staff. Approved by your planning and zoning committee. Fully complies with your current ordinances and your zoning administrator all but said this is a pro forma application. Well, pro forma in quote. So if you vote against this proposal, you send an alarm signal to all other property owners that your commission can and will indiscriminately abide by or not abide by the very ordinances that your commission. Both wrote and approved. A no vote really threatens all other people's personal property rights, presumably even your own. You might as well just really throw out the rulebook at that point. The words of the ordinance then become meaningless. Now, it always seems that other people believe they have better ideas about what to do with other people's property than the property owners themselves. I've seen this before. And that seems to be the case here from what I've read in the local paper. A group even had the audacity to take out a full page ad about the hearing. Maybe you've seen it. But let's be clear. I don't know these people, but I do know that they don't own the property in question. They didn't purchase it decades ago like my grandparents did. They didn't pay a single tax dollar on it as my uncle did for decades. They didn't maintain the property and preserve the riverfront trees. And they certainly didn't plant trees with their uncle on a hot summer day and walk beans on the farmland as I did along with my siblings. They really have no connection or interest in the property. There's also no infringement of any right of theirs with this proposal. They don't own the land next door even. I would like to remind them that in America, we respect the rule of law and we respect private property rights. The only decision you have before you today is does the application comply with the ordinance as written? Secondarily, you do want to ensure that the property is developed for its highest and best use. You can rest assured, this application fully complies with your current ordinance for rural residential zoning. And a vote in favor of this proposal is the best way to preserve the beauty of the river for generations to come. I sincerely request your favorable approval of the proposal before you. Your yes vote will ensure property rights will be respected and reasonable economic and residential growth will continue in accordance with set ordinances. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Other proponents?
I need to push the button down. Are we good? So, okay. My name is Larsaga. Three one seven two six Meckling Road, Vermillion. I'm also a property owner along the Missouri River. I didn't write a big speech or anything like that. I just have the the ad that was taken out. By the group. And I happen to know that some of the people on that list. Have property along the river. Well, they enjoy property along the river because they lease it from me. So. It seems that maybe some of the pressure from one side or the other. Needs to be looked at as everybody tries to enjoy things. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Other proponents? Is there anybody on the Zoom that's proponent? Would like to speak?
My name is Paul Remus. I reside in Vermillion. Dan Heine was my uncle. I worked for him for many years on the farm, beginning when I was eight years old. And I was just down on the property yesterday. Brought back some great memories. I know Dan would have loved to see that development go through. He he loved that land. And. And he purposely, I know in the floodplain there, he expanded, took some of that floodplain, turned it into agricultural land. And there's a irrigation system on there. He could have certainly gone all the way to the river with that. And that system could be expanded in the future quite easily. But I'd rather see that. That area preserved. And I'm fully in support of the the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Other proponents?
Colleague Phospet reside in Vermillion, but own property on the river and have for a little better than twenty twenty one years. Pretty well, all the bases have been covered here. It sounds like I just wanted to to say that. I'm in favor of this project. I don't see harming the environment in any way. And again, the comment about saving people off of the river, we've done more than once. Having homes there is not going to be a detrimental. Impact in my opinion.
Thank you. Other proponents?
My name is Kyle Johnson. I live at three one five eight two four fifty fourth Avenue, straight north of High Lines. I farm the ground of Danny Heine. First started down there in nineteen ninety eight. And enjoyed many memories with him. And also discussed many of his intentions. And we would take drives down along the river. Where the one pivot, we call it the West Pivot. Arcs the trees. You can see that in your newspaper, the printout is very proud of how he set those irrigators up. To preserve those trees for his intentions of the river lots being sold. My parents live next to High Lines in a development. I do stone removal for theirs and one others. And I also boat on the river from Ponca, actually Sioux City to Yankton, Omaha to Sioux City to Yankton. It's very beautiful. I've grown up there. I'm the third generation. Of my family. Listening to the Sarah about the eighteen houses. And only ten of them. Are close enough to the river. The other eight are not. That's a big compromise in my mind. That there could be more. I know the two hundred foot is identical to what my parents have on the river. I know there are lots that are less than that along the river. Either way, up and down. When we boat it every weekend with my kids and my family. We sometimes just stop and enjoy the view of those houses because they are very nice. Danny always told me nineteen seventy six was the first irrigator that he put up. And most of those acres down there, at one time he had twelve hundred acres. I would say more than fifty percent of those. Acres were cleared to farm. He was very proud of setting those irrigators up. To sell the river frontage for people to enjoy. There's two pivots that could be extended and farmed the rest of the ground. I don't believe a taxpayer should be able to be told what to do with his ground. It's been clearly stated that the zoning is all in place. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents?
Okay, so I'm Norm Kaufman. I'm a resident of Vermillion. I use Clay County Park. Even do some of the shooting down there, some of the clubs down there. I just want to say, I think this would be a good idea. It looks like it meets all the requirements, so I don't see a problem with this. I just want to kind of give my support for this. So, thank you.
Thank you. Other proponents?
My name is Doug Mark. I live on the river. I I boat on the river a lot. Looked at this property several times floating by it. And I guess. Way it's set up with the setbacks, two acre lots, they're not trying to cram a bunch of houses in there. I I think it'll be a beautiful development. I think a lot of the trees will stay, just like everybody else noted. I also would rather look at the trees than than farm ground, which could happen. If the if the farmer that owns it wants to tear the rest of those trees out. So I am in favor of this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Other proponents? Hearing none. Opponents?
I'm Suzanne Skirm. I live here in Vermillion. I'm very opposed to this project. I have been looking at the comprehensive plan for the county. And there's some really interesting maps there that show, if I'm reading them correctly. That show. Places that are not really suitable. Because of septic tank absorption field limitations. And if I'm reading this correctly, it says here on the the. The legend, the yellow is severe limitations, the red is moderate limitations. The area that we're talking about is down here. It's hard to see because when you enlarge it, it blurs. But that area is yellow partially and also red, which means. Those are not areas that they recommend putting. Septic tanks in. I don't know how you folks are going to get rid of your waste, but I assume it's septic tanks. It says here that a map of the septic tank absorption fields for Clay County is located on that map. Severe limitations indicated in yellow represent soil properties or sites that are so unfavorable or so difficult to overcome that special design. Significant increases in construction costs and possibly increased maintenance are required. Moderate limitations indicated in in the red represent soil properties or site features. That are not favorable for the indicated use, septic tank limitations, their install installation. And special planning, design or maintenance is needed to overcome or minimize the limitations. So, you know, it's fine if you're setting back your houses. If we can't see them from the river, that's fine. If you're growing trees, that's fine. But what's going to happen to all that waste that comes from those houses? If that land is not suitable for septic tanks. The other point I wanted to make is that everybody on the proponent side has said that that this this proposal. Conforms to all the rules for rural residential. Or perhaps it does, but that area is zoned, natural resources conservation for a reason. It's not suitable for development. Thank you.
Thank you. Other opponents?
My name is Bruce Gray. I just. Read through the letter that the administrator submitted on this and. Had a couple issues that one residence or even eighteen potential residences, he writes, is nothing new or unprecedented. Eighteen seems like a lot. And. I I see that he. I printed out part of the comprehensive plan. And he highlighted a. Spot in the introduction that the plan is neither, you know, neither endorses nor prohibits development. But just shortly after that, they speak of appropriate use of the comprehensive plan and. That South Dakota laws require zoning districts and regulations be in accordance with the comprehensive plan. And it's the intent of the document to show the most appropriate use of land and policies followed within the study. Area based on potential for growth and development of the county. And it seems like if. To ignore that is really. Seems like it just totally throws out the purpose of the comprehensive plan. It really seems like. If if it's an inheritance, a house or two like that's in there. Seems one thing, but this is eighteen. This feels like kind of a new town popping up right on the edge of the river. And there's a lot of us that live and pay taxes in Clay County. Your relative paid taxes for it as it was as an agricultural property, but. It's a. The Clay County Park is something that's a resource to all of us and the rest of us that don't have the privilege of owning a piece of property, we can come down there. And this vista presents itself and. and this vista presents itself. And I just can't believe that 18 or more houses, 56 acres. It sounds like if you make it rural residential, you can put a lot of houses, not just 18 there, so. And oh, apart here in the parks and open spaces portion of that, sorry, I'm a little nervous, but says preservation of open space. Open space is an important feature in Clay County. To maintain environmental balance in the county, certain areas should be reserved in their natural state. Such areas include waterfall protection areas, state game production areas, aquifer protection areas, floodplain protection areas and agriculture areas, but it's I don't think that we should a lot of the proponents have said this is perfect for the rural residential, but it's not zoned to that. So please don't change the zoning regulation. Thank you.
Thank you. Other opponents?
Connie Krueger, 714 Lewis Street. I picture Spirit Mound. And that was when I was a kid, my dad would drive us as far as we could get because it was on private land. And we would admire it and he would tell me the story of it and and that was that. And then I was so pleased that when it came time for that property to be redistributed, one of my colleagues, Larry Monfor, I taught with him at Vermillion Middle School. People like Larry joined together and did almost the impossible. And that was to preserve the Spirit Mound so that now my new friend who has a new leg and climbed up it last Wednesday night, we can experience it together. So we have it, we have a zoning now that protects all of our ability to enjoy the land. And I appreciate the owner saying that they are going to be aesthetically pleasing. And I would, I want to trust that. And I, I'm sure that many people on the river get helped by those people. I'm sure many people look at the beautiful houses and admire them. I love houses. However, when you have a chance, I think it was Harry Freeman at the last meeting who talked about being, taking people there and showing them this stretch of this wild river that you can't see anywhere else. That you can look at this wild river, you can enjoy it. And because once it's rezoned, it's done. If we'd put a housing development around Spirit Mound, it would have just been this kind of lump and there would have been some story. And maybe, maybe during the Lewis and Clark anniversary, you know, there would have allowed something to happen. But, but once it's rezoned, it's done. And if it's not aesthetically pleasing, if we have gaping garage doors that we have to look at and fences and the land isn't as aesthetically pleasing as being promised, then we can't do anything about it. We can't look at that natural wild river. We can't float down the river and picture what it was like for all of the generations that preceded us. And then another point I want to make is that the farther away that you move communities, the farther away you move from the resources, it taxes all of us, it taxes all of our resources. My friend Linda Hazelstrom, who's a writer, talks about the difficulty of pruning tomato plants. Because you see this beautiful blossom at the end of the limb and you know it's going to be a beautiful tomato. But in order to keep the core strong, sometimes you have to cut that blossom and sometimes you have to let go of that tomato. So here we have a proposal to put quite a few houses quite a ways away from Vermillion. You're going to have possible septic tank problems. You're going to have garbage removal. You're going to have traffic. You're going to have people who are going to Clay County Park to enjoy the solitude, to enjoy the tranquility. Another, another article, another person that spoke at the last meeting was, was luring new professors to the university by showing them, like, we have some unique things here. We have some unique wildness. We have this small community that's very, very rich in its ability to to come together and do things together. To put things away from the community and expect the community to support those taxes us all. One of her statements was, "Just as the tomato plant works harder to ripen distant fruit, each mile increases the expense of supporting a country community." We all pay those expenses. Every other citizen, no matter where they live, is taxed by groups living away from the center where energy is produced. I, I think it's wonderful that people have enough money to create a beautiful home in a natural area like that. But right now, we have a zoning that protects that area for all of us to enjoy. And I sincerely request that we keep the zoning as it is because once it's rezoned, it's done.
Thank you. Other opponents?
My name is Dave Struckman Johnson. I've lived in Vermillion something over 40 years. I grew up in Chicago or near Chicago and went to a big university in Indiana. And I came to South Dakota for graduate school. And I was just amazed at the openness and the beauty in South Dakota. And when I finished school, I chose to stay in South Dakota. I wasn't born here, but it was my choice to stay here. And a good bit of the reason why I wanted to stay here was the environment. And floating down the river from Yankton to Clay County Park, a number of times in my youth, I remember very distinctly that there were some beautiful parts of the river and there were some parts where there was riprap. And the riprap just wasn't part of the environment that I thought should be in a place like that. And this was before it was designated recreational river. I can't imagine people thinking, well, these houses are beautiful up there. And I don't mind looking at three quarters of a mile of riprap along the bank where it used to be natural to look at those houses up there. When you're floating down the river, eye level is the riprap, not houses up on top. So my suggestion is that we leave this as a recreation, a conservation area. I mean, if, if in fact, we might change this from a conservation area to residential rural, what's the point of ever having a conservation area? I can't imagine any place that's more appropriate to be a conservation area than along the Missouri River alongside our national park. If this can be changed from a recreational, from a conservation area to a residential area, is there any place in this county that we can't claim should be switched from conservation to residential? I can't see what it would be. So I would hope that you would consider that when you're deciding whether to rezone or not.
Thank you. Other opponents?
I got vaccinated, I've been infected, and I've been boosted, so think I'm okay. But I know I work in a public setting, so try to be extra careful. Yeah, so. Let's see, it's is on, up is on, all right. Okay. So.
Name?
Oh, thank you. My name is Jeffrey Graylobe. I live at 514 West Main Street here in Vermillion. I wanted to make sure that the very first thing in my comments today was an apology. I attended the planning and zoning meeting and I came there having glanced at all this before the meeting. Came in very much wanting to desire to protect an area that I really care about. And I was mostly just speaking about my love for the river. And I realized that my comments implied that many of the other people that were speaking on the other side of the issue did not love the river. And I apologize for that. That is incorrect. When I left the meeting, I understood how wrong I was about that. So thank you for hearing that. So I was hoping, really hoping that the current zoning map could be displayed. I went home after the meeting, after reading the memo, the comments. I went to go see, well, what's the zoning map right now? Where's the NRC? Where's the rural residential? And I pulled it up on the website. I thought I'd see a patchwork. I thought I'd see scattered NRC around the county. That's not what one sees. And I was, I thought it was the most powerful visual aid I could share here because the intent of the zoning is very obvious with, when you look at it, there's NRC pretty much continuous band along the entirety of the Missouri River. It doesn't scatter around the rest of the county. It follows the Missouri River floodplain. You have a few sections that break the continuity of the NRC designation along the river. And those are administered by the state as a wild game production area and also administered by the Corps of Engineers, their own agricultural zone, by the Corps of Engineers is wildlife production area. So those are already heartily protected and the remainder of it, pretty much all of it, is NRC except for how many rural residential developments? One, one, that is smaller than what's proposed here. So in light of that, I just took a lot of issue with the statement that this is not new or unprecedented. To me, that visual aid set a very high bar for changing any of that NRC designation. The intent is just obvious. So some people have already spoke about the comprehensive plan and what was presented of it in the memo and in the previous meeting. I, I saw where the language was that the comprehensive plan, it's a general guideline that neither endorses nor prohibits development of a certain kind in a certain area. That's in there under development and adoption. But on the very next page, there's a whole heading for appropriate use of the comprehensive plan. It says that South Dakota laws require that zoning districts and regulations must be in accordance with the comprehensive plan. So really, I wanted to come here speaking from the point of view of someone who's been employed to do federally funded watershed ecology research, wildlife ecology research in NRC land on the river that was both private and public. But I realized all I really need to do is bring the comprehensive plan down here and point out the items that were omitted in the memo. So because really, this is, this is the answer to how do we weigh these competing, competing concerns here? Because they're valid, you know, private property rights are important, but public property rights are important too. I do own property adjacent to this, to this proposed development because I am a co-owner of Clay County Park, as are, I think, probably everybody else here in the room, so. And I'm a taxpaying property owner here in Vermillion as well. So the zoning ordinances are the way that we balance the needs of people that are private property owners and then the public property interests of everybody else in the county, so. In the, there's a section on parks and open spaces in the comprehensive plan that says, heading is preservation of open space. Open space is an important feature in Clay County. To maintain the environmental balance in the county, certain areas should be reserved in their natural state. Such areas include waterfall protection areas, state game production areas, aquifer protection areas, this is one, floodplain protection areas, part of the property is a floodplain protection area, and agricultural areas. The remainder of the property is an agricultural area. There's a section on environmental constraints. So what environmental concerns should constrain development and rezoning in the county? Development should be limited due to environmental constraints such as high water, poor drainage, and unstable soils. At least two of those are present at this site. There's a section on rural area policy guidelines. So we have an urban area in the middle of Vermillion and a couple other small sections of that. There's a transitional area surrounding Vermillion and then pretty much the remainder of the county is rural area. So these guidelines say, what do we do in the rural area? Both city and residents and farming community have a fundamental interest in preventing scattered and haphazard development patterns in this area. In addition, so then there's a few goals under there. I wanted to point to one, four, and eight. So number one, yes, says that the residential density of not more than one building site per two acres is important. In the memo, that's the only protection that's provided. That's the only way that anything in this comprehensive plan is addressed. But the very next sentence says, "In addition, every effort should be made to cluster residential uses and preserve the remaining area to agricultural activities and open space." Number four, we need to limit residential rezoning. So first they talk about the two acre rule and then there's a comma. And the continuation of that sentence, which was not in the memo, is limiting residential rezoning, limiting residential rezoning, or providing a sewage treatment system. And I didn't see any, any plans for an active sewage treatment system as a part of this development. Moving on down to, in the interest of time, there are some great framework that guide how do we approach this problem? There's a planning strategy. And I wanted to point that in the intro to this section, it's, it uses this language. It says, "The following goals, objectives, and policies will guide the county commission and are the basis for regulations contained within the Clay County zoning and subdivision ordinances." So the following is why it's currently zoned in our seat and how we should approach any interest in changing that zoning. So it lists several goals. Goal two, protect natural resources. I'm just going to point to objective two, and I am nearly finished. I'll wrap up as quick as I can here. Okay, I'll just wrap up as quick as I can here. Thank you for your patience. Objective two, create greenways and linear open spaces within floodplain areas. So this is a beautiful greenway. It's about part of a section that's, depending on how you measure it, at least five miles of open greenway. We don't have very many of those. Objective five, limit development in areas with unsuitable soils and high water table. This is both of those. Policy one, limit development on soils with severe limitations for septic tanks. A previous speaker noted that this is in that zone. Map three, you can see it. Yeah. Objective six, I have to read this one because this is really the, when I saw this, I thought, okay, well, I could just go down there and say this. Preserve and enhance Missouri River riparian areas. Policy one, the county values the preservation of Missouri River riparian habitat for the natural and scenic qualities of the Missouri National Recreation River. And I just have to say, okay, I have to wrap up and I have to go. Right now, I, the closing arguments here is that the, you know, that the applicants are not without recourse here. In the memo, it says already, houses are built under the current zoning. To me, that's not an argument to change the zoning. That's an argument that what we have in place now allows a few houses, three per quarter, quarter section, houses could be built there. It just doesn't allow 18 houses. It does not allow residential development in this area. So thank you for your patience and for hearing me out.
Thank you. Other opponents?
If the button's up. Okay, so I'm Megan Jarco. My address is 2118 Old Bridge Road. I wonder if this will work better. I would encourage you, right, of course, to vote no on Megan Jarco. And, and leave it as it's currently zoned. As Jeffrey really clearly laid out, this is meant to be, you know, part of the free flowing part of the Missouri River. And one of the areas that I'm really concerned about, as we increasingly stabilize the banks of the Missouri National Recreational River, it becomes less free flowing. And so I understand that if you put development along the river, you would need to stabilize the banks because the homeowners don't want their property to go in the river. But the reason that we don't allow bank stabilization along most of the Missouri National Recreational River is to allow the river to move. So, you know, rivers will move. And I know, once you start developing it with residential development, you have to stabilize the banks, which affects all of us because it prevents the river from moving as it should. So as Jeffrey highlighted, this area is zoned as a, an area that should be protected from that. And I think it should continue to stay in its present zoning so that we don't increasingly put riprap along the banks of the Missouri River, thereby affecting all of us, you know, who live around the river and downstream particularly. Thank you.
Thank you. Other opponents?
Hi, again, fully boosted, Sharon Gray, 32 East Bloomingdale Street, Vermillion, South Dakota. And first, I too wanted to apologize because I was the letter writer and Sarah very kindly spoke with me at the post office and corrected some of my misconceptions about Dan Heine's intent, the fact that there's a house, their house to the west of Clay County Park and the floodplain setback. So I really appreciated that. And I actually did write a letter or newsletter to the editor, but I don't, it got in in time, but I don't think it got printed, so. But I wanted to also echo what Jeffrey said, where I believe everyone in this room loves the Missouri River. And I am hoping that everyone appreciates that we see it differently on how to approach that. But we all know that we all love the Missouri River. I, my, one of the things I wanted to share that, I want to echo everything Jeffrey said, by the way. I thought he did a wonderful job of bringing it back to bringing it back to our comprehensive plan. And the fact that it stresses the importance of avoiding scattered sprawl and development in a rural area. And this area would be bordered by a public park, a wild and scenic river, an agricultural land. So how is that not scattered sprawl by the definition of, of, you know, pulling residential out of the core cluster? I do appreciate that the current, and I think this is my most important point, the current zoning of Natural Resources Conservation District allows for some residential. So it's already there. It's just not there at the level of eighteen. And so I just want to make sure we understand that, that we're not saying you can't build a house there. We're saying you can't build eighteen houses there. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Other proponents or opponents, sorry.
Hi, my name is Cindy Game. I live at eight oh four Canby Street in Vermillion, lived there for twenty six years. I had a whole letter written, but a lot of it's been addressed. I would like to speak to the aesthetics of the river. There are so many of us in this town. I go out there almost weekly to appreciate just the beauty of it. And I'm also photographer. And I want to tell you, when you're taking photos of the river, if there is a structure in the photo, if you're there for the wildlife purposes of it, it wrecks the photo. Okay, so I'm not saying your beautiful structures are not beautiful, but for a wildlife photo, it changes it. And I do editing and every time there's a structure in my photographs, I edited it out. So this is not important so much to most people, other than I'm trying to make the point that the beauty of the river is, is, is its natural wild beauty. And this particular portion of the river is allowed, has been designated to remain natural. And we have something very special in that. So the other part of this is every time I go out to the river and I, I visit various portions of the river, it changes and it changes weekly. And that's part of the beauty of this river. When I moved here twenty six years ago with my family, the first thing that somebody told me was go out to Clay County Park. That's where we went. And that was the place that sold me to move to this town that I raised my family in. And then another just little issue. Okay, my church, every Easter, we go to the Clay County Park for the sunrise service. And the sun rises in the east. And we all stand there and we watch the sun come up over the beautiful river, over the cottonwood trees. Yes, there's the field there, you can see the sun. I'm just making the point that the natural area is a, is a real perk to our county. And this, this whole development idea sets a really poor precedent that we can just suddenly plop a subdivision in this spot that's considered our park. Really the, we all see it as that whole area is our park. So please vote no.
Thank you. Other opponents?
My name is Miltar. I'm the acting manager of the Missouri National Recreational River. The headquarters are in Yankton, so not a resident, but I guess you'd call me more like a neighboring or adjacent landowner or land manager. I sent a letter with the, from the park service to the three zoning commissions. So I hope that's part of the packet. So I'll just make a couple of comments that also are expressed more thoroughly in the letter. Missouri National Recreational River was established by Congress in nineteen seventy eight. And then after the Congress establishes a wild and scenic river, they give it to another agency to manage. And in this case was the National Park Service. Some of them might go to the Forest Service or the BLM. But the park service is managing the Missouri National Recreational River. And what Congress charges the park service to do is to protect the values for which the river was designated as a part of the wild and scenic river system. And maybe I'll, there was some question about that earlier, maybe I can help clarify that. There's a whole Wild and Scenic Rivers Act and Wild and Scenic Rivers System. But within the system, rivers get a different, get designation. Well, some of it, it's confusing since the designation is also part of the name of the act. There's wild rivers, these have no, no developments, very limited access. You might imagine, you know, a river somewhere up in Alaska. Scenic rivers are more developed, there's more access, like the Niibery River. Some of you might have tubed on that, that's a scenic river. The river here, Long Clay County is recreational river. So there's different designations within, within the system. And it gets a little confusing. So, you know, since the, the National Recreation River is a neighbor to the property, we take a look at, you know, what are the values for which the river was just the wild and really scenic river was designated? There was free flowing condition, water quality, the cultural ecological values, fish and wildlife, geological, geological values, scenic and recreational. And I talked to you, I talked to, since this February, I had to talk to the people in the regional office, my supervisors before I could, we could express any opinion. We looked over the matter and, and if we're trying to manage the river for those values, it seems better in our opinion, that it remains a natural resource conservation zoning instead of a rural recreation or a rural residential designation. I think that would be helpful to us. So as, just as a Jason Lander, we'll just add our, express our opinion, we can take into consideration. Thanks. Well, I will add, somebody mentioned, I think it was Sharon. I went to the rezoning meeting and here too, I was struck by how everybody does love the river in different ways, but it was nice to hear somebody who's trying to manage the river, how much, how much appreciation there is for it. So even though we might differ on this, on this, on this matter, I hope we can find some ways to help protect the river and allow everybody to enjoy it and find some unity there. I'll leave it there.
Thank you. Other opponents? Hearing none. We'll close the public comment period. We'll get comments from the, from the board. Oh, sorry, sorry, sir. We got to give Sarah ten minutes. Sorry.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me, I was muted, but could I speak from Zoom, please? Jerry Wilson?
Yes, you can.
Thank you. I want to make a few points. I think most of the argument has been well made. One thing that hasn't been mentioned was the fact that the zoning administrator in presenting this, the case for approval of this zoning change, he described the purposes of the rural residential zone and said, you know, it complies to the purposes of that zone, therefore it's, it's going to be okay. What he omitted strangely was to describe the purposes of the Natural Resource Conservation District, which the land is currently in. That seemed rather strange to me that we sort of leapt over the key issue of this is NRC land. And does this proposal comply with the regulations of NRC land? No, it doesn't, not as proposed. That's, that's a really important distinction to keep in mind. From a personal point of view, besides the fact that I've enjoyed this river from the water for forty years. And for about fifteen or sixteen of those years, a group of local citizens has held an annual river day for sixth graders across the county down at Clay County Park. And I've been honored all that time to offer opening remarks for this. And one thing I always tell the sixth graders is how lucky we are to live here in Clay County where we have our own national park, where we have access to this beautiful river. And even in the twenty three hundred miles of the river, about a hundred, less than a hundred miles are wild, are fleet, free flowing. And so we're so fortunate to live on this stretch of the river. And I add that so far, all the land between Clay County Park, our public park and the Missouri River Bridge are undeveloped. And I tell them, you know, when you become adults, I hope that you will engage in the, in the effort to keep it that way. Keep it undeveloped. Yes, there's development on the river, but not next to Clay County Park. This is our only park, the county's only park. It's the public's only place to go and enjoy the river. And putting a housing development there would inevitably and for change that, the fact that the public has access to the river there and can enjoy it. Yes, there are houses up river, but not visible from Clay County Park. And, and this would have changed that forever. Finally, yes, we all love the river. But what's at stake here besides the question of whether this should be rezoned? And I think it definitely should not for many reasons that have been stated. But ultimately, I think that public officials are sworn and have promised in issue, in, in situations where there is a conflict between the private and the public spheres. When private property rights come up against the public's right to enjoy public spaces, I think it's incumbent upon public officials to go with the public, to listen to the public. We have good zoning regulations in place. This is NRC land, it should stay NRC land. And I think it's the duty of public officials to recognize the public property right above the private. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing none, sir? Rebuttal?
I'm not a lawyer, so my rebuttal is not going to be well organized. I've got some little notes here that I'm going to just kind of try to scratch off here. First off, any septic systems that are going to be put in are going to totally comply with any requirements and codes per the state and, you know, any regulations. So there will be no seeping of anything. It's, that's, take it off your worry list. Zoning classifications are in place to be used. Yes, it's NRC now, that does not mean it cannot be changed to something else. Rural residential is there as an option. You don't just slap rural residential on it until somebody wants to, you know, rezone their property to that. And then it makes sense. Here's another thing, there, it's proposed eighteen lots. And as I showed you on the little map here. First off, when you're standing here at the landing, let's say I'm at the landing. If I wanted to see lots, one, two, three, four, five, probably six, if I wanted to see a house and where it's going to be sat, sitting, you would literally have to go like this, okay? You will not be able to see those. Now you probably will be able to see maybe some of these four. And then there's this point. None of these will be visible from K County Park landing, none, no way. This point will prohibit that. And possibly many of those will not be, oh, sorry. And possibly, possibly maybe even some of these, depending on how far they're getting set back. And as I mentioned, we would like to set, make the set packs deeper than what is even required to be sensitive to those who don't want to see them. That will be a covenant. And with the depth of the way they're plotted out, that should be no problem. People will still, I know Doug and Sarah's lot is over two hundred feet back. So, you know, it's set back, nobody can really see it much from the river and they've made, they've probably got the most beautiful lot on the river. They have these beautiful trees and it's, it's absolutely gorgeous. Anyway, um, all these others, I want to remind you, they are not even river lots. There's a giant portion of NR, what will remain NRC, I guess, because it's in a floodplain. That, that's not, not a river lot. So you're really looking at ten and again, you would literally have to crank your head around to be able to see any of those if you're standing at the landing at Clay County Park. This, I think you're dreaming this up to be something that it's not going to be. And again, this is a great way to preserve these trees. People are going to want to keep as many trees as they can to keep their, their lot beautiful. It's a way better way to, to preserve this by having this development than not. Again, it could be farmed and cleared, there could be nothing left. Okay, not the farms aren't beautiful as well, but sounds to me like everybody likes the trees here. Think we all agree on that. Okay, um, this is actually probably the most logical place to put a residential river development than anyplace else in the county. There's already development there. Clay County Park is a development. That big slab of concrete that is the landing did not naturally occur there. They put rip rap on their, their property. The county did or who, the government put rip rap there. So anybody who's opposed to rip rap, look at your own government who does it. And they've done it in many spots along the river over the years. They've rip wrapped. So just because it, you know, if the people who want to control other people's land would get their way, don't think that it's not going to be stabilized still or couldn't be or whatever. Even if it was in public hands, it could be rip wrapped. And again, as far as the logic of having a development there, there's already a ton of activity at Clay County Park. People are coming and going all the time. If you're going there for peace and solitude and, you know, some quiet time, you're not going to find it there. There's people coming and going all the time, lights and noise and just dogs and I mean, you name it, there's a lot of activity down there all the time anyway. So, you know, here's another point. If you're looking for undeveloped land adjacent to this, this second parcel that is my uncle's is almost four miles of government owned land, a river frontage, almost four miles. There's about a thousand foot stretch there that's privately owned in there. And about eight hundred acres. So go just past this and you'll be, there'll be nothing. There is not a, a lack of undeveloped property along the Missouri River. There is a ton of it, a ton. If you want to get away from it all, you can. It's very easy to do. What else? Okay, here's another point. Where I live, right next to Clay County Park, there's a development of eight properties. That's been there for twenty five years. Three have never built upon, there's nothing, nothing. So just because there's eighteen lots and again, ten of them are actually on the river, the rest are not even on the river. Who knows how many will actually be developed? There might, some people might buy two lots and just, you know, just to have extra space. Others might just buy it and just let it sit there. And anybody who wants to see it undeveloped, put in an offer. Here's the other thing, that's another thing, they might not even all be sold. They may not even all be sold. I don't know the exact intention yet. They may not even all be sold. I don't know the exact intention yet. So some of it may just sit there. I'm guessing that I I'm pretty sure some are just going to be held and sat there. So that's another thing to to think about. Um. Uh let me see. Okay, again, this NRC thing. They that was, as far as I can tell, that was just blanketly slapped on a whole lot of property. And just because it's NRC does not mean it cannot come out of NRC. That's nowhere to be found. But it cannot come out of NRC. Properties are rezoned all the time. Um and again, very important to remember, this is privately owned property. This is not the public's to decide. This is private. And the intentions of this private ownership are good. They aren't evil. They aren't trying to put something up that's going to pollute the river. Uh that that's another thing. Nothing's gonna, this will not inhibit the flow of the river. This will not inhibit anything. The the fish that while everything's still going to be there, this does nothing to harm anybody or the river. Um what else? Uh I also want to point out recreation. Everybody recreates a different way. Some people like to recreate by having a picnic in their backyard or hosting a family gathering at their home, which we do often. And and bless a lot of people with the opportunity of of being able to enjoy the river that way. So you know, this won't cause anybody not to be able to do the same activities they're already doing there. Um. And I also just want to remind that the ordinance allows for this. No steps have been taken to prohibit this at all. They've made provisions for it, rather. So I really hope that you will respect private property rights and happily rezone this to something that will be a beautiful asset to the county. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Want to close the public hearing? Open it up to the board. Any comments?
Well, it's just the first reading.
There's lots to be processed ready here. One thing that uh I want to, one viewpoint that I have right now that I've uh taken by uh taking a closer look at the proposal is that actually, we're almost here presenting everything is that either this is a development of eighteen properties or nothing. Uh if it stays the way it is, uh it's an NRC property, uh kind of the assumption here is it'd be zero. Uh in research that I've done is that with if it remains NRC, uh the owners of the property can develop at least twelve houses on this without any zoning change, without any change, any special permits, any conditional uses. What our zoning says is that we can develop up to three residences on each quarter of a quarter section. Uh correct me if I'm wrong. I Drew, I pointed this out to him actually this early this morning. That uh really, there's three decisions here. One of them is is the property owners don't want to develop it further. Remain as egg. That's their decision. If they want to develop the property with the four family owners uh developing uh lots down there, uh they still still have uh eight properties that would be allowed and under NRCS. Uh it would restrict, the main restriction on that, if it stayed as NRCS, it would not necessarily start the ball rolling to make to rezone more as residential and develop, for instance, north of the road that they propose or further down the river. Uh they would have to develop on other forty-acre plots to do that. That's really the only main difference that I see, especially since uh you voluntarily limited to uh or proposed uh two and three acre lots. That's the same as it would be as it is now on on NRC. And uh I don't really see looks to me like it's zero if they decide to do nothing. Sixty sixty-six percent if they decide to go with the with uh working with the zoning as it exists or run the hundred percent all the way to the eighteen if it becomes a rural residential. So those are the three choices that I see, and I'm sure welcome to any comments on that.
So I looked into what you had too. And but I I'm assuming since there's six hundred acres there, there's potential for forty-five.
If if they if they transferred the uh the rights uh to riverfront from those other
Which they're
acreage north.
Which they're able to do for our zoning, or they just plot out forty acres that run north and south.
Yeah, so there's no really no
This is
Their thought, this is this is termed as a quarter of a quarter. It's not forty-eight acre plots. It's called forty uh quarter of a quarter, which is essentially one third, fourth of a quarter section, which is one-fourth of a a a full section. So I would construe that to mean each forty acre square that's platted under the uh public land service.
But this is platted all as one, six hundred acres. So they could plot it however they want on the forty acres.
That's plating. That's not, that's not PLS uh designation. Uh quarter of a quarter is a legal term under the Public Land Service Survey.
Right, but it's it doesn't say which, how that forty has to
Yeah, and and if it goes the other, if it goes that way, yeah, you you've got a lot more rights if if it if Travis is correct.
This is just the way they're doing it proposed right now. It's cleaner. I mean, it's it's just, it's easier the way they've proposed it than to start plating it off
Sure.
transferring housing eligibility's, which are both allowed in the in the zoning ordinance right now.
Correct. So I'm just pointing my viewpoint out is that this isn't a black and white. This isn't uh we're not, if we kept it the way it is, we're not removing any property rights. If we do a rezone, we're adding property li- rights to the to that particular piece of land. So I don't see that as an issue either. Uh governmental action can work both ways, as I recall, when I took public lands law at USD that that uh the government can both give and take away. Usually, we think of them taking away, but uh it is possible in rezonings like this to actually give more property rights to landowners. I think I've muddied enough in that respect at least.
So Travis?
Betty.
Yeah, so um I I think Dick's analysis is uh is spot on. And I'll just add something that Sarah Taggart said earlier, which is the other possibility is in the past. Um uh you know, the reason we have that four-mile section of of public land is because um the federal government shows to buy uh land rather than allow it to be um developed in actually a much, much larger proposed development uh than this. And so now we have, um you know, some 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 really amazing public land that the public has access to. And I would encourage our our National Park Service representative to you know, to bring that possibility back. You know, to his regional office and um you know, see if 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 that's a possibility, because as Sarah Taggart said, you know, make make an offer. Um and and really, it it could, um you know, satisfy, I think, uh a lot of, a lot of the goals. Um I I've spent many, many, many hours um talking to people individually, reading letters on both sides.
Just a minute, Betty. Just a minute. If we could be, no, not right now. But we could just be quiet while Betty speaks. Sorry, Betty.
Thank you. Um so one of the things I did was went back to the foundational document of the Missouri National Recreation River. And you know, I I think past commissions, when they created the NRC zone, knew exactly what they were doing, because this NRC zone um is completely in compliance with um the foundation documents of the Missouri National Recreation River. Um so the purpose of National Recreation, uh sorry, NRCD zones includes protect views, um preserve natural settings for wildlife habitats, add to the aesthetic quality of the community, and prevent the destruction or pollution of valuable and irreplaceable natural resources. This is a request for rezoning. And as 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 Dick pointed out, you know, they would have the right under the current zone um to build twelve houses um and actually additional uh developments in the agricultural land to the north. So you know, I I I don't what 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 what's at stake here is not giving additional property rights to owners who own land now under an NRC district. So going through the foundational documents, um you know, we have this fifty-nine mile zone that is unique among the twenty-three hundred-plus miles of the entire national Missouri uh or the entire Missouri River Corridor. Um it's uh described in the foundational documents as wide meandering channels, shifting sandbars, secondary channels, some of the last remaining forested floodplain wetland habitats on the Missouri River. This is unique. That is why it was designated a national park. It protects one of the last remnant examples in the nation, in the entire nation of a dynamic channel habitat in a large river system. When you, every time you riprap banks, um every time you stabilize a bank, what you're really doing is preventing the river from meandering, preventing sandbars from forming. I guess the other issue here is that we now have a six-mile continuous wildlife corridor. That's why it's an NRC zone. That's a specific purpose of the NRC zone. Um and building eighteen houses interrupts this long corridor. Um it supports, this is again a quote from a uh founding documents, it supports an abundance of birds, mammals, amphibians, reptiles, um and insects within a diverse riparian community. Um and it's unique on the river in this section. So the National Park Service divides up this fifty-nine mile section into a number of segments. We're number seven segments. Um and it is unique. It is unique um among uh you know, all the sections of the river. Um one of the reasons it's unique is because of the lack of bank stabilization allows the river to move. And you might think, well, who cares? Um but wildlife really care. We have pallid sturgeon and paddlefish here um because of the shifting channels of the river, because backwaters form um where they can spawn and so on. Um it talks about the panoramic views of the open flood uh floodplain and a glimpse of what the river originally looked like. Um so I I am concerned about the conversion of riverfront to residential uses. Um you know, it does create a need for bank stabilization. That is a foregone conclusion. The Army Corps has already denied banks stabilization in some areas there. But you know, as soon as you put houses there, bank stabilization becomes necessary. And the river no longer meanders. It is no longer a wild and scenic river. And this section of the river, uh you know, I mean, basically you are destroying the purpose of the national park. Um you know, I I I think Jeffrey Gray Lowe made a lot of really good points. As a scientist, I'm concerned that at some point we'll no longer have a wild and scenic river. Um you know, I think we need to think not just about, you know, the eighteen people who would like to purchase the this riverfront land, but I think we need to think about future generations. Um and whether there will be a single river in the nation um that has wild and scenic components, because we are the last. Um so I think the commission that designated this NRC land uh knew what it was doing. As Jeffrey Gray Lowe pointed out, it's um you know, the NRC land just lies right along the river corridor. That is what it's for. It's to provide continuous wildlife habitat. Um and you know, I I I think that the family of Daniel Heiney can certainly um follow his wishes and develop properties for members of their family. But giving them the right, I think, to uh you know, uh situate eighteen houses um right within that NRC area. Um you know, I think it shortchanges the future of the river. And I think it short shortchanges the values of the national park. And I think, you know, one of the reasons that people come to Clay County is because of Missouri National River. Um somebody else mentioned this, but when I came here, it was, you know, twenty-two years ago, it was the river that um that uh was the deciding factor among quite a few other opportunities. So the question before us is really whether we give additional rights and not whether we take away rights. We're not taking away anybody's right. Um the NRC zone is in place. Um and I think I think we uh we ought to keep it that way. One one last point. Um it it, you know, we've said that there are so many houses already on the river. This is true. Um but when you talk to people at Panda Rosa um after the twenty-eleven flood, um they're not all happy that their houses are right on the river. And so I'm not convinced that we do people a favor. Um you know, there's the FEMA-designated floodplain, but then there's the Missouri River floodplain, which is the space that the river wants to go. And you know, rivers are like buffalo, right? You you can, you 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 really can't hold them. Um you know, I I I I served on a city council in uh the state of Connecticut uh after a massive flood on what looked like a floodplain, but was not designated a floodplain. And I think that this land, um its highest and best use at this point, um understanding the way rivers meander, um understanding that we have a a a national park right in the middle of our county. Um I I think the highest and best use is uh for public public acquisition of the land. Um and and you know, reasonable um uh uh development as allowed under the NRC, NRC designation. Thank you.
If I'm understanding everything correctly, or is right now, if Sarah wanted to, she could develop twelve, twelve.
She would have to
Right, but she could.
Plot it off or designate those housing eligibility's to that quarter-quarter.
Right. So how does this affect Mr. Olson and Mr. Mrs. Olson?
They'd be part of that.
They'd be
They'd be part of the three.
They'd be one of the three. They'd be one of the three. That's what I thought, but I wouldn't make sure. So basically, she'd have eleven and they'd have one.
Well, I I take that back. If Sarah were to build three on her forty-four quarter-quarter, that encompassed their lot, they could not build.
Right.
Sorry.
So they, so but their quarter isn't, they're actually on Michael Bottles' ground, correct?
I have no idea.
Ship doesn't matter in this particular
Okay, okay. So that's what I was trying to straighten out my mind.
It's my understanding. Now, I'm I may be completely misunderstanding that.
But it depends on how you run the quarter. Do you run it north and south or east or west?
No, it's
It's quarter to quarter.
Okay. It's uh
But that doesn't mean this is But that doesn't mean it's a, it doesn't mean it's not.
Feet on the side.
It, it, it design, designates.
Yeah. That's a question I need to know. I mean, because you know, I know what you're saying, a quarter to quarter, but.
PLS.
Yeah.
But we have, we have sections in this county where the quarters are quarter-mile wide, mile-long.
Right.
I have one right next to me.
Well, yeah.
That's, we have 40 acre plots that are a quarter.
No, these, these are full quarters and they run a mile long.
Yeah, they're called quarters, but they're, they're not public lands quarters. That's, that's, that's under national survey.
These were surveyed that way when the state was statehood.
It would be wrong to call it a quarter.
Well, that's how they were surveyed. So, precedent's been set.
Thirty years ago, when I was in law school and took public lands law, but I know we, we did discuss that. And of course, it's 30 years ago, but I, I'm quite certain that, that PLS designation is 13 by 13.
At least for the purposes of zoning ordinance, a quarter of a quarter section is determined by the United States for Tangular Land Survey System, shall be considered a quarter-quarter section for the purposes of these regulations. So, these regulations right away is for public or private transportation shall not impact the completeness of a quarter-quarter section.
Now, there are, there are times where a, the definition of a sectional land can be different in a way because, because like there are correction sections every so many miles. Remember, there's even one in Clay County. I don't think there is where the, the sections are shortened, north and south, sometimes they're skewed a little bit. I don't know, maybe a drunk surveyor, but when you get right down to it, really, a quarter is, is defined is a quarter of a quarter of a full section is defined in the public lands survey. That's all ongoing by, and it sounds like that in the wisdom of Clay County, citizens honor that.
Okay. Well, that's what I was at after because, you know, it makes a lot of difference which way you, you look at that. So, that being said, if I look at this, those one, two, three, four, five lots clear to the east, I don't know about you, but I don't think I'd want to buy any of those five. And it just because of all the, I'm buying a lot of ground there that I really, I'm always away from the river if I want to be on the river. That's my thoughts. I think those would be the last ones that you'd ever sell. That, that's a personal opinion because, yeah, I'm just, so if that does, it brings it down to 13 lots, including Mr. Mrs. Olson's. So, I mean, I guess I get back to this deal is here. I don't want to go through this whole thing of having you go and do the, you know, going through and the different plotting on the different land, but hey, that is an option that you could get to 12. You know, I'm just throwing that out there. You know, and I know you're, you're, you're set on 18 and that's probably, but if, if there is, that is a way to get around this. I'm good. I'm saying is we'd satisfy both groups.
Personally, I believe it, it is. It all depends on how you draw the 40/40.
Yeah, see, I.
Quarter-quarter. I shouldn't say 40. Quarter-quarter could be, you could have 140 acres in that section, in that quarter and whatever 40% or 25% of that is, is what a quarter-quarter is.
Kind of alluded to, you can't, you can't have quarter, quarter of a quarters that are only 36 acres, for instance, because the, because the original land survey, when it was surveyed, it was, it was divided in a different, different way to accommodate adjustments, surveying adjustments in those respects. And I, I laid it out on, on this beacon, beacon sheet. Actually, why I even got to this point was that in the middle of the, this, this deal is here's the properties go down along here.
Microphone, please, Dick.
Excuse me?
Sorry about that. Here's the boat ramp and here's the far end of their properties right over here with the last trees trimmed out. The center of that section is actually section 21, not section 16. But I learned today that there is this, because this is all accretion land. This land was originally part of Nebraska and during re-surveys and treaties between the states with the land that was on the north side of the river mainly has been given to South Dakota and conversely, south in Nebraska and during the milk noses during the point, one of the points in acquiring Goat Island as a national park thing was that we didn't know which state even owned Goat Island for sure. So, there, we had to go back through the, those treaties and there were a couple of them, I think, since statehood that considered that. So, I was in the process of determining this quarter of a quarter sec- section thing to come up with these 12 houses when I, I noticed that, that we're not even in the same township or the same section that it says that needs to be done on the, in our, our interaction here, reclassifying this part. It says it's in section 16. Apparently legally it is in section 16, even though it's more than a mile outside of section 16 proper, which really, really bothers me, you know, I, these are things that bother me. I, I, I like to have more order than that. It's the surveys and I know that on a number of projects that I've worked on, last one was like, say, Nelson Sorensen's. You know, I, I had to go through this process of kind of building a South Dakota survey because Nelson's land over by the bridge is still surveyed out and labeled as being part of Nebraska. So, in order to get him a water right through the guys in Pierre, I had to rebuild, kind of build a South Dakota survey like has been done here on Beacon. And the guys in, in Pierre then used my re-surveying data to determine exactly where their well point was and where the pivot was going to run. So, I go down this at work, well, for three more days. I'm, I'm retiring at the end of the month, by the way, people from Heiney Electric anyway. And so, this is something that I do pretty commonly, four or five times a year, it seems like. So, I was during the process of figuring out these 12 is when I figured, wow, this is even in the wrong section. Thought, man, there's another additional problem here. I, I'm assured that that other problem that I worried about doesn't occur, that it doesn't exist. So, I'm pretty sure about the 12, 12 houses, though. I've done the measuring on Beacon at least, and it looks like there's, for sure, on the land that they're already considering that you could do 12 there under present zoning. We're at first hearing here. We've still got another, another time before things will actually be done.
Billis.
Figure I should chime in also. I will admit, I or state that I have listened. I have spoken to both sides. I've read everything. And I will say this issue has brought more out and with more respect than pretty much any issue in the past 11 years to my experience. I started writing down my thoughts last night and I turned to fiddler on the roof of Tevias on the right hand, on the left hand, them weighing very equally of the important points. One thing that did come up that has never been discussed, and okay, I will state, I am for the lower count 18 and changing to rural residential at this point, still feels like it's opening up to further and further development along the river. My thought was something on the idea of nine and then Dick came up with the 12, I think is a lot more comfortable. The question I did address to Rod, our highway superintendent, is how are the equipment, the materials, and how much will this change the road to Clay County Park? That is currently built as a lightweight for cars and trucks with boats only. It wouldn't, any kind of development down there is going to require a complete upgrade of that road and potentially timber road. I feel very strongly that I can't commit the county money to improve roads that we don't have. I mean, we have the roads. We don't have the money. So, I'd really like to see some kind of an agreement on how that is to be approached. It may not be in our current zoning at this point. It is in other areas. If we were to develop hog confinement or something, I believe it is stated that there is road care. But that, something of that sort, I feel needs to be in. I was very happy to hear about the idea of strict covenants within, that was another concern that I had. I feel that at this point, the property rights are there to develop this to an extent that somewhat satisfies both sides with leaving it as NRC. And with that, I'll turn it back to you.
My thought on it is if you, if we allow the rezone, that gets 18 of those houses developed that property because what I see happening is though, if it's 12, they'll, they'll develop the 12 lots and clear cut the rest and there'll be an irrigator on it. Because that was Dan's, Dan would have done that 40 years ago, had he not had this plan.
I, 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 actually, I helped farm this land a few years when Dan was in a little poorer health. I, I did spring tillage, fall tillage, did some of the, some of the work during the, the harvest season. And so, there was a year, about a year and a half where Dan was having extra health issues. And I did, that was back in the early eighties. In fact, so I spent a lot of time with Dan and on that land and a couple of those irrigation wells I drilled. And I, you know, I actually talked to Kyle a little bit about this. He's farming the land now that, that the thought is, is that if we had the wrong, wrong landowner, that they would clear cut the cottonwoods down along the river and, and by implication, these cottonwoods here. And like I told him, I, I can't imagine anybody being that dumb because that land is mainly protected instead of by riprap, by those, by those cottonwoods. And anybody that farms along the, along the river understands that. Now, we might get some, somebody that cruises in from buys the land and farms it himself from over in Iowa or someplace that doesn't understand that. But likely before he gets going, that his neighbor's going to tell him, hey, hey, don't do this. You know, we all know this is wrong. We're, we're good to each other here in South Dakota. I don't think that, that even the neighbors would not correct a person when he had such a plan. Up to the river, that ain't going to happen. I've got, actually, our first family pet is buried in those cottonwoods. Danny, you know, in our, our first family dog got bone cancer. We love that spot. I used to take, take her down and throw sticks into the river and she would retrieve until I stopped until the time came that I thought, I'm going to kill her if I throw it out one more time. She would go whether, whether or not she was able to. If I threw that stick, she was going to go. I would, I just knew it. And so, that was one of our beloved family spots. And I called Dan when the dog got bone cancer and asked him, when we put her down, can we bury her down at our favorite spot? She's there now. I guess I was not, never say never, though, Dick. Somebody might come in there and tell her those.
I'm saying, I'm saying.
Saying, I.
It's hard to imagine.
Same way you.
It's hard, hard to imagine anybody being that damn dumb is the way I.
I might agree.
There's a lot of people in the county like that, if that's your definition.
Yeah.
Because it's happening right now.
Yeah.
And with the price of land, you know, and they're not making any more.
Yeah.
They have 56 acres of trees right now that they're taxed on. I thought, I think it's a compromise.
Every year, exactly.
Those trees don't stop that.
And that means, that means that the, the, the bank is steadily eroding now, even with that. And it's, it is, is Betty pointed out, that's, that's inevitable. That's part of the, that's part of the river. That's the other part of my education as a geologist. When I was in school, I was just enthralled with fluvial geomorphology. That is the shape and form and how rivers work. And I really wanted to be a fluvial morphologist when I, geomorphologist, when I got out. And partway through my education, I realized, you know, there probably aren't enough jobs in that realm for me to really have a good shot at that. So, I smartened up, broadened my education a little bit and had a great life as a geologist. And I'm really grateful for that. But yes, it's going to happen anyway. Those, the other part is, is that our observation well network tells us that the water levels is being pulled down by the degradation of the river. Those, those cottonwoods, just like the ones up in our campground at Clay County Park or park board meetings, you know, we have trees die and fall over all the time. Increasingly so as time goes on, cottonwoods really depend on a very shallow ground, groundwater. They don't have that anymore. Those cottonwoods are, over the next decades, are going to convert from a cottonwood forest to a cedar forest. That's inevitable. So, get used to cedars and the smell and don't plant apples by them.
Any other thoughts from the board? Got a motion to move it to the second reading?
Still moved.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
I'm sorry, we're voting to move it to the second hearing?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Magler.
Yes, motion passes. Do we have a date set for that one yet, Drew? Do we have a date for the second reading yet? So, next Tuesday?
Yeah.
Do we have a time yet?
We have five days between.
Do we have a time yet, though?
Uh, nine o'clock. Yes.
Okay. So, nine o'clock next Tuesday is the second reading. Thank you.
You lucky gal.
What's that? Yes.
Harry, if you can hear me, the camera's been bumped.
Carrie, if you can hear me, the camera has been bumped.
If you wanna buy that plot where your dog is resting.
He had a big heart period.
Yeah, he he really did it. Yeah, he did. It was it was really, I have such fond memories of being on the farm. You know, and then going and it's like legacy. I mean, I just really do so.
Sure.
And he come back every single year and enjoy the river at Sarah's house now.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, my kids look forward to it every single year. So I appreciate your concern on the project.
I can't imagine all the sweet corn that guy gave away.
Oh, tons. People just went in there all the time. Yeah. Yeah. Sorry, we're not staying for the rest of it.
That was my that was my. I didn't know how they were.
Yeah, I think Olson's are fine. That's what it says is that. The gold says on this three residences on each forty. Quarter quarter to quarter block. So they've already got their stock body. They just haven't built yet.
Which is the problem. Well, I mean.
Yeah, they're legal under present law to build.
They're legal to build, but if she were to build three before them, they can't build.
Yeah. On that quarter to quarter on the west west ones that are where you wanna do the other family. One through. Five or whatever. It could be it could be as a compromise. You end up spending. Two of those on the jointing quarter to quarter and we'll be right on that anyway. And the other thing is there is a transfer provision in law or in our ordinances. Where we can transfer rights from one quarter to quarter to an adjacent quarter to quarter. So we could bunch a little bit because of that. So I think this can work and. Really Drew understands more than I did, even though I found the I found the provision. But and he didn't think that that applied until we reasoned our way through it. And in fact, that was just this morning. I called him right away and saw that there was an issue with. Being the application being for section sixteen and all of this property is in. Well, there's most of it two twenty one, some of it's a twenty eight and. Because of the Cretion Law. This land the land is technically or it's legally in section sixteen. Or maybe I'm wrong. It's not in it's not on the ground in sixteen. So all of it's in twenty one, twenty eight. All the land that that we're working with here. So.
I just keep thinking the twelve of the eighteen like this. These last four or five are gonna be to most people the most. Or to to those who oppose the most.
Yeah.
Nicest ones because they're.
You've already got you've already got most of the hurdles. Taken. You've already gone over most of the hurdles if it remains NRC NRC. Yeah, but that's only twelve.
Again, those last ones are so far back anyway that we don't see many now.
Yeah.
If you want to be on the river, those are the ones that, like I said earlier, they'll be the ones that I'd be last to buy because. If I wanna be to the river, I wanna be to the river. You're like four acres away from it.
It's not it's not our decision to make.
Somebody say.
I want one of those.
I would like I would like this.
Well, then we need to move on.
Yeah, we need to move on.
Sorry about that.
That's all right.
Yeah.
Andy, are you on?
Andy's muted.
What did she say? She said Andy's muted.
Well, yeah. A second. I'll go make sure he's in his office. He was waiting.
Are you ready to go? Okay, we're gonna we're gonna do Lisa right now. They're all gonna be hot. There was somebody in every seat. Okay, so prime and contract.
So this is the company that I am going to be going with. When we no longer are with Patty's company, Bossa Nova. I've had calls with them with Ericsson's and Patty both. Lexi has looked at the paperwork, her. Her her issues that she had with the stuff we've addressed with the company, they've changed the wording that she's. Kind of talked about. So basically, I just need Travis to sign off on it because it is gonna be spent with or the the M and P money that I have. From the state will be used to pay for all of it for that first year and then the second year. Going forward, depending on how much money I have left in M and P will just be my normal technology budget. So. So basically, I just need Travis to sign off on it. And I believe the quote that they gave you is actually good until today. So. Yeah, I know, right?
Okay, so if I understand this right, so then this is a one time fee, but there's an extra fee the next year.
So it'll be like with T Tech, how it's a little bit more that first year because of all the building and the setting up and the training. And then after that, it'll just be like a normal maintenance fee after.
Okay, that's what I thought I was reading earlier because it said the maintenance fee didn't start till like twenty twenty three, twenty three.
Yep.
Okay.
And I told her, I mean, obviously with Carrie and Rhonda changing softwares as well. I I'm in no rush to start. So I told them that ideally we'd like to go until the fall. So that gives them plenty of time to build it and for us to train. So we're not just like jumping blindly, you know. And we have we have time because you guys are also kind of it'll be on the same timetable essentially.
Okay.
So.
Why move to approve the chairman to sign it?
And I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith. Yes. Packard.
Yes.
Mockler.
Yes, motion passes.
Thanks, guys. Thank you very much.
Do you need this?
Yes, she does.
I sure do.
Wasn't sure who did.
I'll take it. I told her. And then she'll email or she'll sign a mail.
Is Andy on yet?
I'm here.
Okay, jail meal bid, Andy?
Yeah, Carrie's got at least one.
You should have that in your folder there, Travis.
I don't know if we were how many were received, but I know of one.
Just the one.
That makes it easy too. Unless it's for thirty five hundred dollars a meals.
Was was that bid in our packet? Because I didn't see it and I. Looking for it.
I have to open it.
Oh, okay.
She hasn't sealed the bid and we all get to know.
At the same time.
Right after Travis cuts his finger on the paper.
Or he finds it.
I found it now.
Okay.
So this is from Pizza Ranch. Let's see. All meals contain one main item, two side items, one bread item, four dollars per meal. Breakfast cereal eighty five cents per meal.
That's pretty much in line with what we've been doing. Hey, Andy?
It's a few cents more per meal. Obviously, we're gonna buy much fewer meals, so he's not gonna get the benefit of volume that he had before. So it's understandable. You know, I I I don't think that that's out of line. You know, I I obviously like to see a lot less if we're operating a full jail and we really had something to offer these vendors. I would think that we could get it somewhat less, but I think that's reasonable. I think the cereal went up from fifty cents to eighty five. That's not a. A terrible increase in the sense. I mean, it is percentage wise, but and and what we're asking for them. So. I I have no objection or to recommending approval of that.
It will also move. Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion?
One one thing, just for the record, I did present these specs specifically to Hy-Vee because they have been in the past. Obviously, they chose not to bid.
Good. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mockler.
Yes, motion passes. Resolution and hearing for supplemental budget. And that would be resolution twenty twenty one dash thirty.
So we did advertise for supplement for a few things in the twenty twenty one budget. And I think you can see in your packet between the resolution and what was advertised, we actually did not need to supplement as much as we advertised for. Just kind of how things shook out at the end of the year with the bills that came in and such. So. That's what I've got.
I would move approval of the supplements. I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mockler.
Yes, motion passes. Patrol car bid opening. Do you have those, Andy?
I I was wondering if if any bids were received. Typically, they go to Carrie's office. I had an emailed one to me back when they were first approved for publication. And I, of course, my presumption was that they would follow that with a sealed bid as they've done in the past, but. If you don't have one, what I've got is an emailed one and then the state contract.
I didn't receive anything.
I know that Donnie Stewart, you know, probably been in that role for less years than Chuck was. Chuck. In past always prepared a a bid and. Donnie for the last couple of years been doing, obviously, maybe he misunderstands or. Not, but Donnie Stewart did provide me with a with a bid by email weeks ago. So I don't know if you want to consider it or not. For the record, what he said was.
Just a minute, Andy. I don't think we want to give the the number or anything. Are we gonna have to just go back to bid? I mean, we got to readvertise and get a real bid?
Let me if you I won't give you the number if you don't mind, but I had some thoughts. The the bid laws allow for the county to buy from any vendor without a bid if they match the state contract price. And Donnie said that he can match the state contract price. So I don't know if if you wanna if you wanna table this issue and and require him to submit a sealed bid. And then or if you want to just accept that.
It actually looks to me as though the only legitimate bid that we have is the state contracted. And given that that's the only legitimate bid we have and the regulation is. That anybody who matches the state contract price is eligible to receive the contract. It seems to me that we kind of have a choice. I I I don't see the point in rebidding. If we don't have to.
We could possibly accept that bid in sight that particular statute.
I think the bid limit is fifty thousand anyway.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, so we don't have we don't have to bid it. We it's just been practiced. So. Yeah, and what what I would want to do with this prior to to placing an order pursuant to the Vermillion Ford price. Is to make sure that it meets our specs. The number he gave me isn't. I I won't say it doesn't match the statement because they've got they've got a base price. And then all of these extras add up to whatever it's gonna be and some of those extras are. Things that we need to match our specs and he's got his base plus some extras. But the way he mentions it, well, we've got a certain package that we're adding and some of these packages include. Things that we need to be included. So he adds them on there. So any case, the the number isn't precisely the same. But I have to see which of the the state bid extras are required to match our specs. So. It but it's within a few hundred dollars.
So if you if you can do that, we can we can. We can approve it next Tuesday then.
Yeah, if you want to table the issue, otherwise you would, you know, if you wanted to just require him to submit it. Not I wouldn't readvertise or anything, but just have it submitted in a sealed fashion. But.
I don't think we need to. I think if you just go through and make sure that our specs are met. And then we can approve whichever one next week.
Yeah, and personally, I think that this is a to to have a local dealer match statement, something we've never had happen before. We bought from local dealers before because they were very close and we wanted to choose the local price and also because they historically have helped us out by taking the trade. That's not an issue in this case, but that's we've we've gone with local dealers, but to have them match the state prices. Is hopefully a good trend that we can see happening.
Do you know who has the state bid?
Yeah, Lamb Motors in in.
Okay.
They're in O'Nider. They they have it most years. So I could certainly report back to you next week to make sure that we have an apples to apples comparison. And that it's a fair price.
Sounds good.
Get it on papers. All really matters, I think. And and Lamb Motors is owned by Chloe Lamb's dad.
Yeah, so Travis, do you need a motion to table? If so, I so move.
Yeah, we'll we'll do it that way.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mockler.
Yes, motion passes. Let's see, Union County inmate boarding contract.
It looks the same, doesn't it, Andy?
Yes, it's the same price. That contract is a it's a standard boarding contract that we have with. Essentially every other county that we contract with. And I think it's pretty commonly used, the same same language throughout. Most counties read it that it. It continues year to year unless amended. Union County reads it that it's an annual contract. So they they just presented to us annually. And but they they didn't make any changes. Other counties, unless you make a change, it just continues. So. The fact that they presented that to us is just that they they want to renew it annually. That's their choice and I'm comfortable with that.
I'll make a motion to have the chairman sign the agreement with Union County for the jail contract.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I would I would just for those I'm supposed to see your packet, but for the record that the the rate that they're asking is continues to be sixty five dollars a day for inmate.
Yep. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mockler.
Yes. Motion passes. Brad and let's see, Andy, do you have anything else?
Were we gonna discuss the JDC contractor? Is that on for next?
Yes, yeah, we'll do that right now then. Two hundred and fifty seven dollars a bed, huh?
Yeah. Yeah, that's some years ago and I'm and and when I say some years, I'm probably talking five or five to ten years ago. I recall in a. Yeah. Yeah, that's uh, some years ago and I'm, and, and when I say some years, I'm probably talking five or five to ten years ago, I recall in a uh, a advisory committee meeting for the uh, JDC went back when we were a compact county, when we actually had a, a compact. I recall then them saying the actual cost to them to house an inmate or a juvenile is, uh, it was somewhat over three hundred dollars a day. Uh, we got a better rate as a compact county because, you know, we're, we were helping them with the debt service on the, the construction project. And um, so I believe that it's, there's probably still some concessions by them toward us to keep that cost affordable as a member county because we know that they will be approaching us in some future year when the time comes to build a new JDC, which was a, a project that was moving forward uh, several years ago until it stalled and they built an adult facility instead. So I, I think that it's, it's likely a fair price and it's certainly not something that uh, we have a lot of other options for, but um, you know, just because we don't have options, I, I don't believe that, that we should be resistant to it. I think it's a, it's, it's what it costs. There's, there's a lot more services provided to juveniles in detention than adults in detention. So when, when you say, you know, two hundred and fifty, uh, whatever, two hundred and fifty-seven dollars versus sixty-five for adults, that they do a lot more with the juveniles. There's a lot more uh, hands-on approach. Uh, they, they're uh, students attending school while, while they're in there, so there are teachers involved. So I think it's, it's probably a fair agreement.
Motion?
Guess I'll make a motion to approve it and have the chairman sign it. Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Muckler.
Yes, motion passes.
Yeah. I don't think we have much of a choice.
Yeah.
I, I think that uh, Daniel came to visit us as a result of me saying, hey, we may, we may uh, it's possible we could have some money left over at year-end budget, which is not true, of course, by uh, asking for a supplement at this point. But uh, I'm glad you came because that reminds us again that your needs are there. Daniel, Daniel Bernstein from the Vermillion Public Library.
Oh, okay.
And uh, so it, uh, the news isn't great, but it's good that you're here to remind us that your needs continue and, and uh, we really uh, we owe, we owe the, the library some because they do give county residents the same uh, courtesies price-wise in using the library as the city uh, gives us or gives to library patrons, even though the city gives the lion's share of the budget to the, to the uh, library, so.
Yeah, I, I'll just say that I agree with Dick and um, will every month actively search uh, to see where there might be savings. Um, to do that, because I, 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 I do feel that it's an obligation we have as a, as a county. Um, and I'm, I'm, I'm committed, I'm committed to making sure we do that at some point. Um, but you know, if, if we did it today, it wouldn't balance um, uh, for twenty twenty-two and um, you know, and I, but we, you know, I, I, I think once we see what uh, what the balance looks like at year-end. Um, and we look in particular closely at, um, you know, Andy's done a really good job of um, um, you know, allocating inmate board costs um, in the most cost-effective way. And right now, um, you know, if the trend continues, um, at some point, we, uh, we, you know, we should be able to do that. Um, and I, you know, I think that's just Andy's wise, wise management. Um, so, so I, I will continue to look every month um, to uh, to try to make that happen.
Anything else?
Don't, that'll do.
Thank you.
I wanted to, I, I just wa- I, it was good for him to show up. I think that uh, where we uh, our unobligated funds, we really uh, or the non-mandated funds, you fell within that and uh, it's really good to remind us that that need is continuing it on and we got, as Elizabeth said, we've got a, we do have an obligation, I think, to, to help you.
Well, I don't think we bid quite as easily with the non-mandated services. We just happen to be organized under the city, but we're still a public service, but different from police, fire, ambulance.
Microphone would be appreciated.
Well.
I'm sorry, I wasn't even sure if you wanted my comments. I know your meeting has run long already, so.
If you, if you do want comments.
I don't want to take up a lot of your time. I purely came to see if there weren't going to be any supplements or changes in the end of the year budget. I know you guys are facing a difficult situation and there's still a lot of unknowns. Um, I reported the decision as the letter came shortly afterwards to the library board and they had initial discussion and um, there were some very mixed feelings. They were very reluctant to start charging county residents for library cars after a ninety-five year history of us working together to ensure county residents get equal access to the library like city residents do. Uh, but there were also some concerns that obviously, just like any other city or county department, there's an operational cost associated with the library. It, it's not run for free. Uh, you know, it's not just books, it's the staff, it's the programs and that um, set in a precedent where we offer services to county residents for free was concerning. Um, and the mixed feelings and torn on that, that not wanting to start charging, especially if it's going to be a short-term scenario, um, and why the challenges with the jail are addressed. Um, and that funding is to reappear next year or the year after. Um, they did not want to be hasty, but there were definitely some concerns there. Um, you know, in some other states and counties, in eastern counties in South Dakota, um, county residents do not get access to their library for free. They are charged a fee. Or if they get even a small amount of funding for their county, they're charged a portion of the fee prorated based on that. And we have never done that. We've long understood the demands on the county and the number of different bills and services they pay and the more limited number of funds. So um, I appreciate your continued consideration of that. Definitely report back to the library board. They wanted to revisit this topic at the beginning of the year and spring of twenty twenty-two and see um, if they wanted to make any decisions at that point, but you know, for now, I just wanted to see what the situation went and I'm, I'm happy to get your thoughts and I will vote them back to the library board. Thank you.
Thank you.
It'd be best.
I gotta do pushing on.
If it's up.
So it's up? Okay, say it, huh?
Yep.
Okay, I'm Jerry Leach. I live down uh, by Cotton Park. And uh, we're not going with the rivers thing because you got another meeting for that, but what you were saying about using some common sense about your Iowa stuff, we're, we're okay. Um, I use the library a lot, all the time, and it's just a gem of a place. I've, I've lived all over the country trying to secure work, uh, because I'm originally from here and I couldn't find a job, so I moved on to find work and I've used libraries all my life. This library we got here is just, just phenomenal, just phenomenal money and or I mean, uh, just a phenomenal place and the, whatever they need for money, we should be giving to them because it's just um, even the college kids come in there and they, you know, uh, use it and stuff like that. It's just a I, I just can't say enough good about it. I, you know, it's just a real, real, it's a top-notch library. It's like one of the best ones I've ever seen and I've lived in bigger cities. And I don't belong in the city, but uh, coming up here and using the library, it's got all of the services that big cities have and even more. So you know, we should give them as much money as they need. And I know that's stupid of me to say that, but because you guys got to find it somewhere, but you should be working on something that can draw people, uh, you know, and it's the drawing the right type of people too. Uh, that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. You're preaching to the choir.
I do want to bring up that there are a number of unfunded mandate that we did not fund, and I think we really need to look at all of them for the future year. If we, if and when we can, we just could not afford it this year, but each one of those that we have funded in the past are pretty important.
Contingency transfer.
And again, this is just a, you know, another thing to square up the budget at the end of the year. Essentially, we start with the contingency transfers, um, because you have that budget already allotted for that purpose. And then the additional was actually the supplement of the budget, so um, this is using up that contingency budget line.
Okay.
And then the supplement was the additional.
I will move approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Muckler.
Yes, motion passes. Take a motion to go into ditch board.
So move second.
A motion and a second, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Muckler.
Yes, we're in ditch board. Brad, do you have anything to add to the payment for three D?
Oh, um, so yeah, this is the final, final payment request. And then there, there's another document there that is the uh, final change order. And, and the, the change order changes the contract. Um, what it does is it adds that the fifteen hundred dollars of mobilization we talked about. Um, reduces the, the amount of the riprap slightly, and that's just a match. You know, I had two hundred and seventy-two tons, but it was two hundred and seventy-point-eight, you know, just loader, you know, how they loaded the truck. Um, and, and also I changed the completion date then to December thirty-first of this year, and that will close this contract out.
Move to approve the contract as amended.
I'll second it. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Kerry, can this get paid today?
Yes.
And mailed? Yes. Hearing nothing else, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Muckler.
Yes, motion passes.
Will you come out of ditch board?
Second.
I think so. Brad, you don't have anything else for us, correct?
Not for ditch board. I could talk uh, just a little bit of an update status on the, those um, small structure inventory we're doing.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Muckler.
Yes, we're in regular session.
Kerry needs more paper.
You know, I, I had taken my laptop home over the Christmas break thinking that, you know, Lord forbid, we had a blizzard or something and I, I needed to email everybody.
Right.
And I had forgotten that I took it home, so then this morning I got to work and I thought, oh, it's not there on my desk. So this is one of those days I'm thankful for the recording.
Yeah. I hear you.
Okay, Brad, small structures?
Yeah, so, so we've, we, uh, we've got the field work is done. It's all logged into the um, the DOT's GIS system. Um, one more thing that I, I, that I need to do, you know, before we just, you know, a- and work on the project. And I have them already done. I have printed out um, maps. And what I thought I would do is I'll send um, send a map to each of the townships, you know, just with a kind of a, this is what we found. You know, do you know of any others? Now, I just want to make sure we get them all, you know, we you know, that gives them one last chance of, of, hey, you know, put a dot on the map and send it back to me and then we'll, we'll get them done. Um, kind of thing. So that's, that's the last thing I gotta do. Um, and I guess I just one question for Kerry, maybe is where do I get contacts for all the townships?
We have them on our website. There's a tab for townships and it lists all the township officers.
Does it, does it list like a, what a fisher for is an email address?
Oh, um, yeah, good luck. They don't like to give us email addresses. Um, it does have physical addresses. It has phone numbers. I can see tab for email addresses, but they don't typically like to give those out to us.
Yeah, what I'll, what I'll probably do is I'll just call them then and see if they can't just give me their email address over the phone and I'll send it to them.
I can, I can certainly send you what we have.
Yeah, 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 do that, please. And I'll, and I'll get that going, so. Otherwise, that's it.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Right, I'm signing off.
Vouchers and payroll.
Move to approve.
I'll second it. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I, I got a couple of questions. Um, the uh, the Louis payments for twenty-four thousand dollars for mold testing, is that right? Just for testing?
No, I'll know that also included all the remediation that they did in the.
And that, that.
Our description lines just aren't quite long enough sometimes.
Okay, no, I just looked at that and thought, what? All right, thank you.
Yeah, I did see that too, but I knew it was for.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I thought that first too, when I see a, what? But then I knew they had done the cleaning and stuff, so.
I was gonna mention, this is Andy, uh, you might have seen it in your packet, but we were pleased to get the bill from Hand or Plumbing for those uh, jail repairs that you'd approved a few months ago. And it was less than twenty-five percent of the quote. If you recall, they quoted us eighty-five hundred dollars, but the, the work went faster than they expected and thankfully they uh, they passed that savings on to us, so it was two thousand and ten dollars and change. So it's pretty happy to, happy to see that, especially at year-end like that.
Sounds good.
So now we have uh, our planning in a jail, well, all functional. There's running water, hot and cold in every cell now.
I don't.
Is there a roof project pay request that I need to sign?
Um, it did not have a signature spot, so I just needed a motion for approval.
We need to approve that pay request?
Yes, if you could.
Okay, move to approve.
I'll second it.
I, I will say, since we're kind of in the discussion, we've got our motion and our second, they are not quite done. Um, Wednesday, Thursday this week, they'll be done. What I'd like to do is just hang on to the check since they're this close.
Yep.
Good idea.
So we'll go ahead and print the check, but we'll hang on to it until they're done.
So one, one question is whether, uh, you know, whether we've had um, a, a kind of competent roof person, uh, independent of the contractor, take a look at it and determine that it's done correctly.
Beckenhour has been checking in since we kind of contracted with them to oversee this in the tuck pointing projects, so they've been checking in with them.
Yeah, so I would prefer not to be that bill until it's completely done and Beckenhour has um, in fact uh, approved um, the completion of the project.
Betty, did you mean for like one of them to come here and take a peek at it?
Uh, to just approve the completion. And uh, you know, if, if they have a contract uh, to supervise the construction, it seems to me that we would want them to take a look at the finished product and make sure that it's up to specifications. I mean, I, I, I couldn't do that. I, I, I wouldn't know whether to pay or not, whether it was complete or whether uh, it was done correctly. And it seems to me that that's why we hired Beckenhour.
Yeah, they, I mean, they've been here on site and taken a look at things. Um, what was left was just really minor stuff. And I think that they could probably uh, do that over, I don't know, FaceTime or pictures or something like that. It was really minor stuff that, that wasn't.
That would be fine with me, but I would want a Beckenhour sign off before we, you know, cut a check for twenty-four thousand one hundred dollars.
I would agree with that.
Do we put this off till the next budget year? Is that what we want to do?
Oh, I, well.
Cutting the check was just hoping that, you know, they get it done this week, that we can have things, you know, looked over this week and not have to carry over into next year.
Let's, let's do the, hold the check, uh, let you hold the check scenario.
Yep.
I'm gonna achieve both goals.
Right. I would agree with that. You all right with that, Betty?
I'm good with that. I'm good with that. I'm good with that. I'm good with that. We trust you, Carrie.
Thank you.
Otherwise twenty four thousand's coming.
Okay, so we've got the motion in second and everybody is good with how we're going to do this? Roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith. Packard.
Yes.
Mocker.
Yes. Let's go to the motion to assign funds for future ambulance purchase.
So, you know, usually, usually I kind of wait until about February to do this, simply because I'm kind of finishing up year end stuff. You know, got it done ahead of time. This would be the funds that we had budgeted for the, this current budget year to set aside for the ambulance. And so what we typically do is after the end of the year, we'll make a motion to assign it so that that money is sort of held. And then in twenty twenty three is when we're actually scheduled to make another purchase. So then that money will be there when the time comes. Just happened to, to get things ready a little early, so I was hoping to do that today.
Move to assign those funds.
Second.
A motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Mocker.
Yes, motion passes. Motion to unassign funds for building improvement.
Okay, so in your packets, you had the list there of things that were intended to be paid out of that million dollars that was set aside for the building. And so those are things that we have accomplished this year and that we have paid. So then we just need to unassign those funds.
So I, I want to, we have a, a separate fund that's independent of the budget year for the building, yes?
Not exactly. So within our accounting, that money is assigned within the general fund. So it's sort of set aside in a different general ledger number. And there's not a specific budget, I mean expenditure budget, other than the general government building budget for that.
So that, and that but line item expires at the end of the fiscal year, is that right?
Not the ass- assigned line item, just the expenditure budget line item. So then within the contingency transfer today and the supplement, that took care of giving that sort of spending authority for these items here. And by unassigning them, we're just taking those funds out of that assigned general ledger line that sort of holds them there, separate from, you know, the regular fund balance essentially. So then reducing that million that's set aside by the hundred ninety five, five hundred and eighteen. So then there's still, you know, essentially eight hundred thousand in that assigned general ledger line.
Thank you. That clarified considerably.
Not sure I explained it great, but I could definitely show you on paper probably a lot easier.
I'll make a motion to unassign the following, the tuck pointing, tuck point, safety center, roof payment one, roof payment two, mold testing limitation and two, total to unassign hundred ninety five thousand.
And I'll second that.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mocker.
Yes, motion passes. Okay, so planning commission applications. And we make this decision next week.
Yeah, I wasn't sure, you know, at what point we cut off accepting applications for that in the joint powers position. I wanted to include them just so that you knew what was there, what we'd received.
Okay, and we'll do the, we'll. I haven't looked at the joint powers one. Oh, no, that's the one I've got pulled up. So we'll look at all of them next.
Okay. Next week's agenda.
Lexi, can we go into executive session on those next week if we need to? To discuss them, or does that all have to be public? Are they considered personnel?
Are they paid positions?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, I don't know about the joint powers. I would assume so, but I know the planning and zoning is paid.
We just like something on.
I don't think we've ever paid for the joint powers one.
You're right.
Planning commission we have.
Yeah.
I mean, if they're considered her, like personnel, if they're considered employees of the county in some capacity and I think if we're paying people for them, then I think that, you know, as a part of a simply job at your view.
Phyllis would know this.
I, I, I think we might seriously look into this because I, I don't think I've ever heard of a planning and zoning commission appointment. I mean, these are appointees, they're delegates of the commission. And I don't think I've ever heard of a planning and zoning commission appointment that was not a public discussion. And so I, you know, I, I don't know the law, but, you know, off the top of my head, but I think it would make some sense to look into that. Because, you know, we, we are appointing them as what a kind of quasi judicial organization. And that is very, very different from appointing a staff member. These are not staff people. They are making quasi judicial decisions. And I've, I've just never heard of commissioners being discussed in private. So I'm guessing that some law there that distinguishes them from public employees. They're not, you know, even if they're paid an honorarium or a stipend. You know, it, it would be, it would be similar to the legislature discussing, you know, appointments to, you know, whatever they have appointments to privately. So I, I'm a little concerned about this one. It doesn't, it, it, it just doesn't feel right, given my administrative law background. But so I, I'd suggest that with, I'm looking into this and making a decision about whether they're public or private discussion. Oh, part of that is, is an honorarium or stipend an actual employment? Yeah. It's not. Yeah, that's what I'm, that's what I feel. Did we lose everybody else?
No.
Oh.
And obviously I'm going to pull up the open meetings statute about that. I just, I want us to be really careful to, if we're going to share something or talk about something that would other be, otherwise be confidential or personal about it in individual. So I get that as a public official, you open yourself up to certain things and that's essentially by appointment to a public entity or board. There's that, but I would also say that there have been things shared with what either appointed department heads or other things of a county nature and I, and I understand what you guys are saying about a stipend. So that's good for me to know is that we, this is a stipend to serve on the board.
It's a flat fee plus mileage.
It is, it is, however, it's probably one of these things too. Commission, we have them actually on payroll, like we have to tax their, their pay. Something that the Department of Labor required us to do. And that makes sense to me because I'm assuming you all as commissioners get that too. And there's going to be conversations that are had. I mean, that, that have been had about either medical conditions or other things of, of anyone else who's on payroll for the county. That, and I'm not saying that's where we're going. I just have no idea what we're going to talk about. And I don't want us inadvertently sharing something about, you know, someone and maybe their fitness to serve on the board that may broach into things that are very confidential in nature.
Yeah.
I, I don't know that's where we're going. I'm just saying that those are reasons I can think of that we would not have an open discussion about certain aspects of things. I don't think that we close the intent, but I just think that there are potential for that.
Yeah, so that we, we have another special issue here, which is despite the fact that a county wise, they're on payroll. They are not our employees because we cannot fire them. The only thing we can do is appoint them.
Yes, we can.
You can remove them from the board.
We can remove them.
How?
By a vote.
I, that's what I was gonna say. I, I think it's absolutely, if someone is appointed by the board, they don't get to hold that position indefinitely. It's just like firing any other county employee.
They, they serve at our leisure.
At our pleasure.
Well, however you want to put it.
Well, I know when I was on the city zoning, that when we brought somebody new on, we actually discussed them and it wasn't an open meeting. I know that's what we did there.
I mean, this would be a good Karen.
I don't know if that's the, the right answer.
Question.
But I know how we did it.
HR question.
Yeah, so this is a Lexi question and, and Lexi, I, you know, you've heard, you've sort of heard our concerns. And so I'll rely on you to, to advise us next week.
Okay.
Because we've taken it under consideration when somebody's not going to the meetings consistently to have them removed. So it's well within our purview to appoint and unappoint. Let's see, what else do we have? So we'll talk about those two boards next week. I don't have anything for joint jurisdiction right now. Executive session, we do need to go into that for personnel.
Move to go into executive, or executive session for personnel.
Travis, I was going to ask, do you want me in that? I can come downstairs. I, but I don't, if, if it's a county commission thing, I'd certainly, no, no hard feelings if you leave me out of that.
Yeah, I think it's just going to be the board today, Andy.
That's fair. You have offered my input, so that's fair enough.
So do we have a second yet?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. So we got a motion in a second. Roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mocker.
Yes, or an executive session. Make you. Just a minute.
Yes.
No, please stay.
We'll make you walk back and forth one more time.
Nobody's left. They all went to dinner.
Don't we? Oh, my goodness.
I've got a motion in a second. Roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith. Oh, yeah, she's, she's out. Packard.
Yes.
Mocker.
Yes, we're in regular session. Well, I think we covered everything. I move to, oh, the one thing, have you, have you told everybody that you got a new hire?
Oh, I assume I did, but maybe I. Our new attorney started on December first and her name is Caitlin Domer. And she graduated a little over a year ago from USD. So, so young attorney, but hitting the ground running, so.
That's first time.
Yes, yeah.
That's a plus.
Yeah, so.
That means that she didn't just go to law school, she actually paid attention.
There you go.
Do people just go to law school?
Congratulations.
Motion to.
I'll second it.
Motion in a second. Roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mocker.
Yes, we're adjourned. Thank you.